This is the Bluff Town Council regular meeting. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Luann Hook.
Jennifer Davila.
Britt Hornsby.
Ann Lepin.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
Before we move into the approval of the minutes, I'd just like to let the audience know and the council that our attorney did not complete the review of the sign ordinance. So we're going to need to defer that either to the May 7th meeting, which is our first meeting, or it may be that I have to call a special meeting for one or two other things and we will put it into that. So those folks who are sitting, just for that point, I don't want to have you just sit to be told that 10 minutes into it. All right. So then the first thing would be approval of the Bluff Town Council regular meeting minutes from April 9th, 2024. Has everybody read them? Are there any changes, corrections?
I'm trying to get my packet open because I didn't bring my note. But is that, is that the one with the public comments?
It would be, yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to, on both public comments, the one that Amor Toomey said, he said that Bluff was nominated as a romantic getaway, but it was actually The Desert Rose. He listed several things that other businesses and the firefighters and EMTs had done, but then it was misinterpreted. There's a whole bluff. It was just his place.
It shouldn't be.
Yeah. But if we're going to list it, I just thought. And there was no mention of Outside Magazine. Where I found it, it was in Deseret News had picked it up and Trivago Magazine had picked it up, but that wasn't mentioned in the meeting.
Did you look at Outside Magazine? Because I, well, I'll check it.
No, I didn't look at it, but it wasn't mentioned in the meeting. And then on the other one, let's see, that was Mark Malloy. Sorry, my notes are just in my head. But Mark Malloy, his main purpose for coming to the meeting, when I re-listened to his comment, was to ask us as a council to create an ordinance for the Jake breaking through town so that the sheriff's office could enforce those rules. Because without it, they, he had called the sheriff's office and without us having an ordinance, they don't enforce it within our town. So I just wanted to make sure that it was clear on that request that he had. And then there's, I think on the other set, maybe? I just checked how to name change on Colette.
Yeah, let's hold on.
Is that the other one? Is that, I'm just wondering if that's on these minutes or if it was.
Yeah, the 16th is the other one, but let's deal with one at a time.
Okay, just so long as the Colette, I was just going to change her name. And I don't know if it was on that set of minutes or the other one. It's like, say.
Okay, let's, okay, is there any other comment on the April 9th? Is there a motion?
I'm motioned to accept the regular meeting minutes for April 9th, including Lou's changes.
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then the second would be the Bluff Town Council work session minutes of April 16th, 2024. Same question. Has everybody received them? Are there any changes, modifications, corrections?
That one is the one that talked about the meeting with Colette Cox and going over to the CCC. It was just a typo. I think it says Courtney, but her name is C-O-L-E-T-T-E.
Colette.
Yeah. And is that the copy of the name?
I don't, was that in the meeting of the work session where we went through?
That was, maybe it was.
The work session. I don't think we voted on.
I don't think Colette Cox was mentioned in the 16th. Let me.
It was that same night. That's what I was reading about. I don't know, Mike can't get this to pop up.
Oh, it was on the April 9th meeting minutes. Courtney Cox. It should have been Colette Cox under number two.
Okay, let's, are there any other, are there any corrections on the April 16th, 2024?
No, I motioned to accept the minutes for the work session on April 16th.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. 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 Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, let's go back and do a revote on April 9th. Luann, what's your comment on the 9th?
Okay, so my apologies, because like I said, can't seem to pull up the packet. But on April 9th, where we talked about going on the tour and talking about the grants that the state has provided and whatnot, it's just, it's Courtney Cox and just should be Colette. And her spelling is C-O-L-E-T-T-E.
So I'm not sure if this is the appropriate way to correct it, but let's correct it now and not belabor it. Any motions?
I motioned to amend my last motion to include the colette Cox's name inside the minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. 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 Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. All right, then. We are at public comment. There will be a three-minute time limit. Any person wishing to make a public comment? If you exceed the three minutes, we need control room to mute you. Are there any public comments in the room?
So starting from online, I don't see anyone who's raised a hand or indicated. So then I did not capture, do we have public comments over here? One, just one, or two? No?
I think just one.
Just one, okay.
I, I'm thinking, hold on a second. I'm thinking in order to do this, I'm going to move the microphone over to this. That would help. I'm just going to move the mic to here.
So you want me to hold it? I don't mind if I can just talk into it.
It'll be fine.
Okay.
And then just, who are you are and go ahead.
I'm Kate Hson, and I just wanted to, hands actually in the past about what I have to. We, we worked with Lou this morning to just go over a couple of things that we want to reiterate. First of all, I want to thank you for working on figuring out a membership application and contract. And there's just a couple of things that we wanted to highlight. So first, I'll start with the membership contracts, which is actually the last thing in the packet. There's three things. The first thing we wanted to say is just, in talking to Lou, it seemed like simple was best. And so you'll see that we've taken the contract that you all received, I think from Malia and Ann, and just wiped everything out except for the annual membership fee and the $7 an hour. And then you just pay at the end of the month. You record your hourly usage and then pay at the end of the month. There's a, we have a couple of questions about the liability thing. We're not sure what that means. And then in talking to Lou, just talking about if a food handler's is necessary, if food isn't being sold, if food's being sold, that's obviously necessary. We weren't sure about that. So those are just a couple of things that we wanted to address in that one. The other thing we wanted to address and just sort of reiterate what we presented to you two Fridays ago in an email, were the pricing structure for everything. And you had noticed that in the new contract that you all received, there wasn't a Fire Mesa Kitchen rental amount. And there also wasn't a combo amount for the community center and kitchen. We had heard you all talk in previous meetings about the perfect, one of the purposes of having the kitchen was to be able to rent both together. And so we thought it made sense to have a combo rate. And so you can see the prices that we put there. And if you're wondering where we came up with these prices and how we got them, there is a table here and we got these numbers from Linda Sosa, all of the elect, like all the utilities. And you can see that we've divided it between the Fire Mesa Kitchen monthly cost and then the community center monthly cost. And we've broken it down into a daily operating cost for each one. And then there was also a formula for if a rental were to happen, how much that would cost in terms of labor. And so we added that labor cost of a bookkeeper and the community center manager into the cost. So it's basically the daily operating cost plus the labor cost. And then estimated from that to get these different prices. And so you'll see that those prices for the single-time member for single-time rentals are all suggested here and they're all in red. So we hope that you'll take a look at those. Oh, the last thing, we looked at all the public comments and just that there were about, there were three that specifically mentioned basing rental fees on having it be lower and having it be based on other things comparable to the region. And then two more that generally wanted rates to be lower. So there were things that were definitely mentioned in public. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the room? You did, that's part of the posting on our.
Yeah, it'll go on the website under public comments. And I think everyone here, you're seeing that.
Thank you. Okay, then moving on. Number one is discussion and vote on additions and changes to rental contracts to Bluff Community Center Pavilion, Fire Mesa Kitchen. And that includes memberships and subscriptions. So. Not really sure where to start with this because we had a pretty extensive work session on this and I thought that we had some general consensus. And now what we're getting back is something that changes kind of the general consensus. So I'm not prepared to vote.
Well, and I, when I asked to talk to them, I thought I'd missed something in the consensus because we had said they pay at the end of the month and just keep track of the hours and that kind of thing. So that's, I thought that it wasn't, I thought something had changed to come up with this.
And the point I'm making was that there are things in here that we didn't talk about or that we, I thought we had kind of ruled out. So I want time to think about it. Right now, we're in a budget piece that we need to deal with and litigation. And I don't feel, for me, that it's productive use of time to go over this again. But that's just me, there are four others of you. So if people are prepared to vote and make a motion or just have a point of discussion.
I'm not prepared to vote, but there are a certain points of discussion. And if you did that, I would like to start with the community center because it's simpler.
So, and if we don't do it, we just carry on like what we're doing until May and then we meet again and talk about it again? Or what's the, what's the plan before we just keep doing what we're doing?
Number 10, new business discussion of a date for a work session next week. So I say we put it on a work session and go back through it and see how close we are to a consensus.
That sounds good.
Jen, Britt.
Were we talking about major changes as to what we were presented in our agenda packet or what we discussed last week? I mean, I'd really like to get this off the agenda.
I would too, but I really need to go back and compare what was sent out versus what had requested.
That's what the red line is.
I understand that.
That's what changed was, so like putting in here, it was still the, decide how many hours a month and then if you're two hours over, you're got to be careful. And if you're an hour under and whatever. So it just took that complication out and you just pay at the end of the month, however many hours is one change. The food handlers, if, if a family rented it and they were just serving themselves, it doesn't seem like they would need a food handler's permit. So it's taking that complication out.
Hold on, there's 16, there's 15 other agenda items. 14 if we exclude the one I excluded.
Well, if we just keep carrying on the way they're doing, I guess, just.
So I do have a question about, today when I went in, the refrigerator was open, the door was open. I went in about 10? So does, did you check anything between, you were to do the checks after people used it. Did you do any checks or was there?
I still don't have a key, so I still need the key. I still need the lock box. That's all, no, I haven't been in yet. I haven't got that set up.
Well, if people are prepared to vote, I would prefer to compare what's being asked to for us to do and rethink it. But that's just me, if people want to vote on it.
I think that if we could, you know, I don't know that we need to have another work session on it. I think that if we could just, you know, I mean, compare this to what we discussed with our work session and then maybe re-present it next week as, as a package that we could all look at and be clear about that, I would be fine with that because I don't really think there's all, I think there's a lot of.
So just talk about it now, put it on work session.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I mean, we don't have to spend a lot of time today talking about it because obviously we just got this. So maybe if, you know, if we can get it compiled and sent out in the agenda package or something for the next meeting to vote. I don't think we need to have another work session on it.
Okay. I still am going to need a work session though.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, that's fine. I just don't, we need to hash this out again.
So do we?
There was another, one of the, the changes would be on the application and contract besides doing that package deal. And I think that comes off of some of the membership things like at, say yoga studios or something, you, you buy a package of 10 and you use one and then you go another time and use another. This is more, if you run in a business, you might need it one hour that month or you might need it 20. And so just pay at the end.
I'm, okay, let me stop you for a second. I'm a little nervous about taking something that is really a public comment and having a lot of discussion about it when this is in our document. Our document was the one that was in our packet. And I really think this is not appropriate time to be doing it. I like Jen's idea and Britt's agreeing. We look at both of them, we just put it on for the 7th and vote.
Would it be possible, I like to, that, to announce, would it be possible for them to start schedule, putting their time down and so that, and we start charging them on May 1st? But then we figure out all the.
We need to put it on the fee schedule.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. And so I had that on the May 7th to add that to the fee schedule to be able to start.
And then the other thing that I think everybody needs to think about is, is the emailing or texting our manager. Again, if they're members, I think we can keep that more open to where you can pop in and use the calendar, use our town calendar or use some other app. So instead of this two days ahead of time, just simplify that too.
So I just want to remind everyone, when public comments are made, they're not points of discussion for us to go back and forth on. This was a public comment. I think we all want to take a look at it. We all want to consolidate these of our time. We've spent a lot of time on this issue already. And so I'm going to move us off of this. It'll be on the May 7th. And Erin, if you will help me remember to both, the public comment gets posted and then that we send a note to the council to, to compare and contrast.
And to confirm, since this is a physical document, we will post that. But of course, people can reference our audio recordings for verbal public comments.
Correct.
And just on my defense, I'm not commenting on their comment. I'm commenting on number one that says, discussion and vote on additions and changes to the rental contract.
So I think we have a consensus for us, so I'll take time to be able to think about what changes, what further changes we might want to make. So that's on the 7th. Number two is off the agenda and that, Erin and I had a conversation with Chris McManany today. We will be having that finalized with his comments for the 7th. Okay, then I thought that we had done this and I went back and I could find no proof that other than voting that we did this. We need to have a resolution that says we want to continue using a specific bank for the 2024 calendar year. And so we talked about it, we voted to use Zion, but we didn't do an ordinance or a resolution. So I have a resolution that says that we would be using Zion, which is what we had talked about and voted on. But we need to vote on the resolution itself.
I motion that we accept the resolution that we will continue to use Zion's bank as our banking partner for the, for the year, calendar year 2024.
I second.
Any discussion? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then you want to put you now. Then the other, I just did a resolution to show we were substituting the work sessions for the town meetings on the second Tuesday of each month so that it's clear that we've agreed to that substitution. Has everybody read that and do you have any changes or corrections? I'm not always good about dates. I double-checked the dates I was looking at. And then what I said was that unless we otherwise extended work sessions, we'd revert to regular town meetings.
Can I ask just a technical question of Erin to help me find the attachments on this email?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, just tell me what happened to them. Here's.
No. Here.
Well, it's got all the stuff.
Yeah, I'll just read forward. So since I replied to you.
But it was on there.
It was.
So this, this is the one that was on there.
And so it takes the second Tuesday that we'd normally have a regular meeting. We'd have a work session. And part of that was to be able to move the budget discussion along and get us through the first month or two of the grant.
I'd make a motion to accept the resolution changing the schedule of our town meetings.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
We talked about possibly making those work sessions start a little earlier than 4:00. Do we need to move that?
Yeah.
Probably a good idea.
On here, it says 4:30, actually.
Oh, oh, good, my typo.
Yeah.
I'm glad you caught it. Yeah, I didn't catch that.
Because that, we talked about 3:30.
Oh, wait, I see. Yeah, so the top says 4:30, the bottom says 3:30.
Okay.
Average.
Okay, so it should be 4:00 at the top.
Well, you talked last time about 3:30 so that there'd be a little bit more flex time.
So let me, let me make sure we're treating this correctly. So the first paragraph, the Bluff Town Council voted unanimously in January 2024 to continue to hold regular meetings on the first three Tuesdays, but to change the time from 6:00 PM to 4:00 PM. That's, I have 4:30, I have a typo, but it's 4:00. Correct. Then when you jump down to number one, I did put in 3:30 to 5:30 for the work sessions. So I need to correct the typo from 4:30 to 4:00.
So 4 is the correct?
Well.
On the top.
On the top. We voted to move our meetings from 6:00 start to 4:00 start and I somehow hit the 4:30. So I'll change that. But then we voted to extend the works, to extend the meeting from, rather than 4, from 3:30 to 5:30, rather than 4:00 to 5:30. So that paragraph one is, I think, correct, is what Lou's agreed to.
So the way I ask is, so I probably need to change this piece, the header, at least for the month or so that we're doing it.
When, for the, yeah, we probably should fine tune that a little bit.
Okay.
So let's talk about it for the next notice. Yeah, probably would be like the first and third Tuesdays of every month at 4 and the second Tuesday at 3:30.
And you want it, I don't remember talking about doing it just for a couple of months. You don't want to just do it for the rest of this year and then reanalyze in January?
I went off my notes. I can go back and check my notes.
So that's what, if that's, just so everybody's aware, I, I had understood it as switching.
Quite honestly, I don't care. So what is the reason?
Just whether it's just for a few months and then reverts back to regular meetings or whether we hold this to the end of December.
My recollection was that we had decided to give it a try and see how it worked, which is why I took the date. But I honestly do not want to spend a lot of time on this. So tell me what you want and I will happily change it when somebody makes a motion.
I would make a motion to extend it to the end of the year for simplicity in changing the second meeting of our month to be a work session. And the third, first and third will be regular meetings. And the work session will be at 3:30 instead of 4:00.
That motion down to that. I would second Lou's amended motion.
And then the idea on that is that we can always call special meetings or another, another work session, another special meeting. But on the routine schedule, it would stay the same for, till the end of this year.
Any further discussion? Then Lou's, and, oh, let me, let's take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Lou, I would ask that you redraft this and I can send you the, an editable version because right now I'm jammed to be able to do all those date calculations. I don't have any time this week and you need to be able to have this signed this week and post it.
Okay, so our computers don't have an editable program in them?
Yeah, it should have Word.
On Word? Okay, if you send it in Word, yeah, that'll work.
So I will send it. If you will go through and put those dates in and clean it up, that would be really helpful. Thanks. Okay, then number four, the update on Bear's Year's National Monument Consulting Party's consultation meeting on April 4th.
Yeah, I'm not going to take a lot of time with this. It went really smooth compared to the other meetings I've been on. UDB was there and they made great comments. Yeah, seems like things are moving along. Still working on getting through the document. Still looks great, though everything I've read still looks like Alternative E is still good for town. Did find out a couple of things about the airport that were interesting that can answer some of our, some of our questions. So we, when we think about the space, whether or not it can be used for commercial aviation, that has nothing, like the BLM has nothing to do with that once the plane leaves the ground, but only when the plane is on the ground. So that will be under SRP, their special recreation permit, which has group size limitations, I believe of 10 is what they're going for in the monument. So that would be kind of what throttles it. If they, they will be able to run commercially out of there. People can, you know, put a request in, but if it's not big enough for other reasons or whatever, they could get caught there. So it's in a little bit of a weird gray area, basically. So it's under essentially hiking and backpacking and driving rules because that's the rules they have, that they can have. So they're not like Park Service where they have like limitations on flying near the park and things like that.
So you said 10 aircraft on the ground?
No, 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 10 people.
10 people.
Like at a time, like doing anything. So.
Are those permits issued via, like, are there fees associated with those permits? And have they set those or?
They, they, there are fees, they are set. I don't believe that they're changing with the, the new plan. I don't know those off the top of my head though. And then they'll take a percentage, basically, is what they do.
Are those commercial group sizes that are limited to 10 or is that any?
I think that's what they're going for for anyone, but I mean, they won't have commercials well over.
And then I'm assuming, and I probably shouldn't assume that it's contingent upon whether you can land that size of a plane.
Yeah, so there's issues, I guess, with the length of the, there's stuff that's on our side if we want to invest, but the BLM doesn't have any rules for themselves about length or any of those requirements. They just kind of treat it like any other permit, like taking a Jeep out.
Okay.
So, but it did answer something by giving us more questions. And the other news is that the, the permits, the BLM had a moratorium on commercial permits during the management plan that's up now. So people can apply for commercial permits on the landscape with the caveat that they are super swamped and don't really have the capacity. that they are super swamped and don't really have the capacity to get back to them quickly. So, you know, whatever that means in actuality, but people can apply.
And I'm sorry, what are they applying for?
Commercial permits.
Flying or?
Anything, any, any commercial use of the land.
Okay.
Yes, so, but we're good meeting and that's all I've got for, oh, I think they're making, I think there's a public comment thing going on tonight.
Right, 6 to 8.
Yeah.
Janet Sloman, she was headed up there. So we'll, we'll get some information from her as to what happened.
At USU, if anyone's interested.
That's a good point. It's at USU at the, is it the Arts and?
Arts and Events Center.
Arts and Events Center from 6 to 8. So if anybody wants to go, it's probably be very interesting. All right, number, anything further on the consulting parties meeting? Then. Looking at number five, report on the Bluff Water Works meeting that was held on April 10th, 2024. And we would like to do an update on that for a summary of what.
Well, Jerry spoke about his plan for strategic, his strategic plan. They ended up not voting on it because the board wanted to think about it, consider it until the next meeting. They had a couple of things I thought were great. The, the main one was figuring out a way that they can, I guess, publish all the information that they know about the water system. And a lot of it is known only by Marx. And so I think that that's an excellent place for them to start.
Anybody else? There's a lot of really good information and discussion on the water system. And then again, on the, the Sunrise participation in the mandate. Jen, you were, you're the secretary, right? Is that audio posted on the Utah Public Notice website so folks can listen to it?
I, I will make it.
If you need some help, Erin, Linda and I are all very.
Very good at transferring my audio files.
The reason I'm saying that is because I think this is one where, I mean, this was the longest meeting I've ever been in.
There was a lot of information dispersed, yes.
And I, I don't want to have to deal with Marx correcting me because I won't, I won't get my notes correct. But there was a lot of really good information. So if you could post that, I think that would be the best way for people to get that information. There was quite a longer, we had quite a longer post, fair enough, quite a longer set of minutes than we usually do.
Could you just summarize what the Sunrise part of it is? How they're involved?
I think I, I think I can do it. And so Marx, when you listen to this, or Jen, you've heard Mark the discussion. So there was a state mandate in the legislation a year ago that requires us, us, meaning the water distributors, to have all of the lines tested for lead.
Lead and copper.
Lead and copper. And so that's a funded mandate out of the 350 different legislative pieces that affected towns. It is one of the very few funded. And so the two, there were two or three engineering firms that the state procured services for. One was Sunrise. And so you get your name on the list and then Sunrise were one of the other two. I think there were three total, although it might only be two. But it doesn't matter. Sunrise is in this area. And so they would do the testing of everyone's lines, commercial and residential and industrial, because there's three types. And then the concern that Marx Powell had is that if you, if BWW goes ahead and does this and has to be, I can't remember, it has to be completed by October 16th or signed on for October 16th.
I believe that it has to be signed on by October 16th. BWW has been testing our system for lead and copper for at least 30 years now, both in individual homes and just on a regular system. Marx's concern is if Sunrise comes in and tests every residence in the town and someone's house has lead or copper in the, in their house, his concern is they could be facing thousands of dollars of repiping bills for their own individual residents. It's not something that the town of Bluff would be responsible for. It's not something that BWW would be responsible for because since we do have tests on lead and copper in our system and it's not in our system. And we also have backflow preventers at each water meter, which means that any water that comes back from a house cannot get into the system. Because of that, he would like there to be some kind of solution that is offered to the public that if someone's house tests positive for lead or copper, that they have somewhere that they can go to help fund repiping their whole entire house was his concern.
And so the concern is legitimate. The concern that I have is it's mandated and what is the penalty for not doing it? But I was in the training with the state at the league annual conference. In my recollection, and again, don't anybody hold me to this because sometimes my brain doesn't capture all of it. My recollection is this is tier one. Tier two is securing the funding from the legislature to do the fix for whoever tests positive. And that was already in the works. They just hadn't rolled it out. Now, again, don't anybody hold me to it, but there was a lot of discussion about that type of situation. And that's why they were pretty thrilled to be able to get mandated because there would be money available. I agree with Marx that it's not set in stone at this point.
Yeah, and he, he says that he is totally willing to comply with that because we've already been complying with that. He just wanted to not initiate it right away until there was, you know, some more talk about funding being available for individual residences.
But if Jen posts the tape and people have questions, it was a really long agenda and a lot of good discussion. Anything else on water?
Thank you.
Number six, report on review of applications for fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 27 State Homeless Funding Grant. Mac McDonald has made a set on a committee to review dispersment of funds under grants to entities in San Juan County and review applications. And then the next step was those applications, after we scored them, go to the state review team for scoring and review. So only one entity in San Juan County applied for grant money. It was the more, it was more time than I had expected, but there was only one grant application in San Juan County. There were some, some of the counties like Salt Lake had 16, 17 to review and are probably much more detailed. But anyways, so you kind of keep your ears and eyes open to see if any one in San Juan County got a, a grant for homeless service funding. It was actually interesting. I've never done that before. Okay, number seven, a report on the Design Review Committee's meeting of April 18th. And then the discussion of tree trimming of the Cooperative Cultural Center. And then we'll hold off on the status of applications for the grant. So the 18th was.
It should have been the 16th.
Was it the 16th? That sounds right. It should have been the 16th. I must have been sleeping when I typed this.
Wait, did we?
No, because we had a.
We moved it.
Yeah.
It was the 18th. You're correct. Because we, we had a, we had, we had something else.
Oh, we had the work session meeting 16th. Work session was 16th, so we did have it on the 18th.
So I don't have my notes on that with me. I don't think.
So last week, we started the discussion of tree trimming, which then moved into this week. There was a question from the executive director, Janet Sloman Shee, regarding reimbursement for the last, now three quarters. And questions about the utility bills and what all they are supposed to be reimbursing us for. That Janet asked to sit down with Ann to talk through the specifics. Linda has been really diligent in providing UDB with the invoices and utility bills. It's pretty spelled out as to what they're supposed to be reimbursing us for in the two thirds, one third split. But as of right now, they have not paid the last three quarters. So that's getting kind of serious. We talked about bid packets, big packages for the Quality Assurance Project Plan and fire suppression. Had a brief discussion, I just have notes here, about solar panels and just wanting to use solar.
That was in, that was in response to the AES panel.
Yeah, yeah. And then we just had some minor conversations about what to include in, in the bid packages. And Melanie and I took some time to put those, to do drafts this past week. So that was kind of last week's discussion. And then this week's discussion, whole nother thing.
So part of the issue on the tree trimming is the trees are pretty distressed at the CCC. And we're working on next week being able to get a commitment as to whether we're going to go forward with tree trimming as, as a group, UDB and the town, or whether we need to consider what our options are. We don't want the trees to just wither away and die. I don't think anyone wants to have that happen, but the question came up about how much would it cost for UDB? And so we went over, you know, we'll go over that next week and try to get some recommendations to the council of all it to do.
Well, probably kind of depend on what you plan and do do at different spaces, what construction and things. It was a matter of how much of a priority it is.
Yeah, we don't want, well, we've talked about starting to irrigate them, but we don't want to lose trees because, or we don't want to have a tree fall on someone's car or something because we have dead limbs that need to come off.
Yeah, I think there's a lot, a lot of different angles on that. So we're going to revisit DRC next week and then it should be something that's on the agenda for this summer.
And fire suppression is on target.
So I have a pretty lengthy bid package draft in draft form. There still needs to be some modifications. When we talked to our legal counsel today, Chris is actually pretty well versed in putting those kind of things together. So I'm going to continue to work on it and get it to a hopefully almost final stage. And then we'll get his feedback on whether it is too lengthy, because it spells out all the federal regulations. So to give you an idea, it's about 82 pages right now. So he can, he can advise us as to if that's too much or too little. And I was hoping to hear back from the EPA because we have like general terms and conditions. And then they'll give us additional terms and conditions so that could be that even more is needed. But we'll, we'll probably float through with just a draft. And I think I'd really like to have something for approval probably by the May 7th. That's probably a more realistic deadline. But then Melanie has been working on that Quality Assurance Project Plan that I mentioned, that bid packet, which is less intensive. It's just we're, we're seeking qualifications. It's not a sealed bid process. It's a smaller contract, but still very important. And I did receive confirmation from our project officer today that we are able to put stuff out to bid, but that, you know, we just can't spend any money yet, or we would be at risk of spending our own money if we haven't signed the contract with EPA.
Gotcha. Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That sounds like we're closing in on being able to finalize that.
Yes. April did not indicate that there was anything that was a glaring issue and that she just has to do a few final checks. And she will notify us when she sends it in for congressional approval. Congressional. Big stuff.
And one of the things that I asked Erin today was. So when these bid packets are ready to go, because they are, particularly the one Erin is working on is like super legal ease. We'll need to have a review by Chris, Mac and Annie, or at least some councilor works in that area. And then my question was, does, we have, we as a town have continued to pay our legal fees, which have included work for this, for the Cooperative Cultural Center, and they've never been apportioned. Well, I say never, there might have been one or two things that were apportioned, but generally speaking, the attorney's fees are ours because it's our attorney. I wanted to know, in the EPA grant, is there a provision for attorney's fees being covered by the grant? Otherwise, my suggestion to the council would be that we have some serious discussions about whether or not attorney's fees that we accrue that go to the benefit of the building and the partnership, whether those should be also split, one third, two thirds. I, I think it's something we need to explore. Erin, your initial take was there might be?
So we have, we have a 5% de minimis. Typically, that's for like incidentals. So our utilities for the building, pens, paper, just like random things that don't quite fit, you know, quite cleanly. So if it was minimal, if the costs for legal fees were minimal, I think we internally could say, oh, hey, that's, that's coming out of the de minimis, the 5%. So that's $50,000 over the course of three years. When I look at legal fees, though, typically, maybe it's going to be a little bit more than that. So we might have a little bit of coverage, but if it surpasses more than, you know, kind of this basic minimal, I do think it might be something to more heavily consider. And, you know, just for the fact of, you know, we're working with federal funds, there's a lot of advice that we need to make sure that we're, you know, lots of, lots of people to make, to get all this to work.
It could be, it could be a separate, a separate account with him where both parties ask him to work for him.
That'd be a conflict of interest.
Yeah, so how do they pay for something that's not theirs? And that's what I'm trying to get around is how they pay for somebody else's attorney. It's, I thought maybe it could be a joint.
If you call it a, if you reframe it not as giving legal advice, the document review. Okay, where it's a part of the cost that we're sharing. You could say that he can't represent them or give them legal advice. And that's kind of, we're stuck on one piece with Utah GNA because they need legal advice on a document. It's one document that's holding their pass through up and they don't have an attorney. I think I may have a contact now, but Janet Sloman, she didn't get back to me today. She was going to come back and meet with me on the financials and I didn't hear back from her until about 4:03 when we started our meeting. So I, I missed, I wasn't able to meet with her today like, like she and I had agreed. But I, I think as a way of example, the USDA funds, the United States Department of Agriculture funds for fire suppression materials, has some really quirky things because we have a partnership with someone else. We were awarded the grant, it can only, those funds can only be used for materials for fire suppression, but only in common areas or areas that we will occupy. So we have to be really careful how we're spending that money and accounting for it. So we're really getting down into the, the details now. So stay tuned. Erin, thanks for, 80 pages. Thank you. Just, it's a resume builder. Just think of it that way.
No, don't think of it that way. No, don't think of it that way.
And then the last piece on that, the applications for the project manager to lighten that load for.
We have, the application's closed off Friday at five o'clock, past Friday at five o'clock. We have two applications. We have two applicants to schedule interviews with. We, Erin and I have brainstormed a little bit about what a committee would look like to do the interviews, all those recommendations we made, standardizing the questions, trying to move it along as quickly as possible so we can get someone on hired and up and running. So stay tuned, we'll have more information next on the seventh, which might get me to that work session meeting where we might want to talk about some things. Anything else on that, Erin?
I don't think so.
Then number eight update on planning zoning move.
Yeah, so they met April seventeenth. The main, there were no land use clearances for this meeting. But the main part of it was the Hanson and Hanson, it's Mike and Jacob came and they are part of the subdivision ordinance rewrite, so that we're in compliance. It's another one of these state mandated things that they're funding to help get us in compliance. So they gave planning and zoning a couple of options of routes to go to get to that point, and they chose the simpler one based on our staff size and based on our time availability. You know, they're comparing to Park City and West Valley City and so on. So they, they picked the, the simpler one for them to move forward on. The main thing about this new ordinance or the new requirements is that town council cannot be that LUA, they call it, which is the land use authority. Town council cannot be that person. And I, you know, I'm sure there are reasons for it, but it's, I'm sure it's so that the politics stay out of deciding whether your ordinance comes or goes. And let's see. Yeah, I think that that's, they can do, you can do one public hearing when you have a subdivision. It can't be, you referenced the NIMBYs, so it can't be NIMBY related. It can't be, everybody's going to gang up and say, no, we don't want this, has nothing to do with it. They just have a public hearing, so you can say, hey, that floods every time, that, you know, or there's been fires through here, or whatever, this is an air traffic area, or whatever, whatever the case may be. You can have one hearing. So anyway, he went through a few of those, he'll have it out in, in two weeks. He figured the, the rough draft of it, and it's coming right along. He'll get the next one in. Let's see. Okay, so and the other thing that they said was that when you do a subdivision, right now, we have smaller subdivisions and larger ones. And what he said is that you don't really want to do smaller ones, because then somebody can have a hundred acre thing and do two divided off, and then another year later do two off this side, and then do two off that side. And so he said, no, you just have subdivisions and you come to it. And it's just, these subdivisions that they're regulating are just residential. So it's duplexes or single family housing. When you get into commercial, if they're going to put a subdivision in where they've got a grocery store or some office buildings or apartment buildings, then that comes back to the town council and does a different, different route. And that, let's see if there's. They're still working on their site plan reviews. The other one that's there, kind of got their attention on is whether they need a land use clearance for the two hundred, less than two hundred square foot sheds and things, because those could become problematic. But that was what if that might be of interest. Questions?
Does it, does it seem like it's going to be a really big overhaul of our subdivision ordinance? And like, I assume he's working off of what we currently have and not just proposing a brand new one?
Well, that, yeah, that was a choice too. And basically, they said what they like to do is look at ours, write a new one, and put our stuff into the new one. So it does become a new one.
Okay.
It does wipe out the old one.
Gotcha. Okay. That's just curious. I mean, either way, I knew y'all would have to vote on it, but, okay.
Yeah, and there's, yeah, some of the rules and things referred back to having our engineer review some of the site plans and that kind of thing. So thought about that when we talked about having an engineer for the roads and whatnot. It actually rung a little bell, but anyway, guess somebody has to look it over.
Legislature's been busy.
Yes.
At least this was a fun day in the end. All right, if there's nothing further on that than number nine, discussion of solar panels for the Cooperative Cultural Center and possibility of purchasing panels from Applied Energy Services, AES. So I had a phone meeting with Holly Kiefer and Brady, whose last name I didn't catch, from AES yesterday. And the purpose was to talk about the update on the bench. But the only thing I've noticed on here is a discussion analysis for the Cooperative Cultural Center in purchasing the panels. So without getting into all the detail, what I will tell you is the project on the bench has been pulled by AES. They are not doing anything with anyone. I will give more detail so people will get that. But I did not have this on the agenda. But I did talk to them about the policy that AES has to put gifting and donating things into communities where there's already an AES solar project or an AES renewable energy project. And we don't have that in Bluff, so the solar panels that were given to Monticello that they have returned cannot be regifted to Bluff. However, Holly Kiefer liked the suggestion that was made, that perhaps the town would want to put a bid on purchasing those panels. And so the, the question then is if AES says that they are in the business of selling solar panels, because that's the question. Or do they want to look at another community that they're already in to re-gift them? But if the answer is they would entertain bids, then we will need to get somebody who knows the solar area, like, all the questions that were raised, can they go on the roof? Can they go on the ground? What's the cost of installation? Are they ones that will work for, for our building? Are they too much or are they too little? I have some of the preliminary answers from people who say they know what they're talking about, but I, I think we would all want to have a due diligence on if we're spending money and putting a bid in. We don't want to have a hundred and sixty panels that we don't have a use for and can't put in. So she's going to get back with me, she referred to it as, she felt like a pinball, because this question has never come up in the AES forum, like, can we sell, sell these? Interesting. And so she said they don't really know who's, who has the authority or who wants to take that to, to figure it out. So I'd say give them a month or two. But she's, she and Brady were both very enthused about working with Bluff and continuing to work with Bluff. So if they could make something work for us to, to put in a bid, they would certainly work with us.
What's her name again?
Holly Kiefer, K-I-E-F, I think, two Fs, E-R, one F, one F. I think she's F. I probably have it. Nope, I don't have it.
I'll Google it. One F. K-E-I-F-E-R.
Any questions or thoughts on that?
That timeline might actually work well. So the state grant has money for engineering or architectural services. So maybe that would be like an initial project that they could help us devise a plan for.
Yeah, because it, one of, that's, I think what we need is an engineer or somebody to look at what it is. And one of the problems that we've got in town right now is that Rock Mountain Power hasn't had just the free hookup anytime, put your panels up and, and hook in. So we would want to make sure that that size of a project that they would accept, or we don't be looking at batteries and things. So we need somebody to hook in.
I think we're a long way from putting a bid in and saying we want them. So just sit back and let them tell us what they're going to do and figure it out. So number ten. We really will need a work session next week because for many reasons. One is kind of talking through what this grant looks like. We're closing in on Erin being able to have everything kind of cleared. And talking about, you know, what the project manager would be doing and make sure we're all on the same page.
Just really like to talk about timelines and like our expectations, what we think's reasonable. And then maybe be able to assign, you know, additional work or just know that, you know, project manager is doing X, Y, and Z, but I need, you know, you and you, you know, to be working on others. I think that would be really helpful.
And I think if Chris were to get the signed ordinance in his comments back to us, we could take a look at that and see what the comments are. And if we can pick a date for a work session, I could send him an email and, and say, you know, we'd like to have this for the work session. Because like everything else, we'd like to move these couple of things off. So does anyone have a preference on a work session?
My only other question for you, just in relation to the time we need to allocate for a work session, are we going to talk any financials or do you just still want to do a separate work session on financials? Maybe that second one in May? So we can do like a presentation of the initial draft, the May first or the May seventh meeting, and then talk about it during the next one?
That was kind of my thinking was so that the council would have the tentative budget and then be able to do the work session. I thought about doing it the way that you asked the question, but my fear was that we'd spend time spinning before we get the tentative budget done. Then we do the tentative budget, then we have to have another work session solely on that. I think it's just easier to get the draft tentative.
That sounds great, thanks.
Making a note to myself, call Chris, I'll send him an email. Anything else anybody wants to see on a work session or can we get a date that would work or not work?
So the thirtieth is definitely off for me, that Tuesday. I have big work, I'm stuck in all day. But generally available like morning of the twenty ninth is a Monday, but most of the day, actually Monday, and then, or no, the morning Monday. And then I'm available again Wednesday afternoon and Thursday and Friday.
I think it has to go back up Monday. But I'm not, so I think Monday might not work. So you said Wednesday?
Uh, yeah, Wednesday afternoon.
Any day other than Friday.
Wednesday, Erin is off.
It looks like Thursday, May second is kind of what it's boiling down to.
Sorry.
Does that work?
Thursdays are great.
Thursday, May second.
Yeah.
We have, we have a meeting with, you know, Debbie at nine on Thursday. It's a Thursday afternoon.
Would everybody be able to do Thursday afternoon? Should we say one?
Pickleball's at four.
Okay, let's say one. Unless you want to play pickleball.
I'll ask Melanie to reschedule skating.
Oh, is there another one on there?
It's at one, yeah, skating, but I don't know if it's being utilized every time it's being reserved.
You do two to four.
Let's plan for one and I'll just, I'm, I know that person is quite flexible, so I sure it will not be an issue.
So Thursday, May second, one o'clock. All right, the number eleven, discussion and vote on the resolution to change the public treasures investment fund recipients. And I did not print out the most recent one, which I think we made some changes.
Only change was one word was misspelled in the, in the heading. So I was just getting fancy with all the, too many vowels.
And you sent me, you sent me the, yeah, I'll just print it out tonight and sign it and get it to Linda, assuming that we're going to pass it. And this popped up as a kind of, like a question, just like, hey, the auditor's looking, there was a change being made, and it was the money that was being moved by Linda, but that generated us looking at, like, we need to change the, people who can look at the PTI. So is there a motion or questions?
So that's a view only, basically, that you can, essentially, we'd just be changing it from saying that Frank can do it to me. I think you guys both are added on as changes.
Yeah, it was Jim and Brandon. So it's just replaced.
Right, because it's all like an oversight thing that you can go in and look at whatever is happening. This doesn't authorize you to transfer money, it just authorizes you to be able to look at it, but everybody can't.
Will it transfer to a well's cargo?
Probably.
Okay, so the only thing I would be changing is instead of recipient, I would print out Erin's new one that changed that word. Any motion?
Motion that we adopt a resolution to change public treasures investment fund recipients with Ann's amendments. Just missed her typo.
Second motion.
Any other discussion? In all favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Or anyone opposed. It's unanimous. So we got a, an update from the state auditor's office about the 2025 election dates, and it spells out what are important election dates. I went through trying to figure out, is there anything that Bluff would need to do for the 2025 election? We wouldn't have anyone up for a council seat. So I confirmed with Lyman Duncan that there would not be anything that he sees, because we're working on the budget, do we need to budget money for something that I'm missing? And his response was, not that I can think of. If no one steps down in the next fifteen months, there would not be an election for Bluff. So if you're going to step down, please let me know before we write the budget, so we could put election money in. But usually, we, I mean, we do have an election category, and we won't pay for our last election in the current fiscal year, so it's going to have to be budgeted something in 2025 anyway. But we usually throw a little bit extra in there because the estimates are never what they appear to be. Then if there's nothing else on that or any questions, we'll move to thirteen. Lou, I wasn't quite sure. So explanation of upcoming mandated in federal water testing, can you kind of give a summary of what you know?
Sure, I just thought we should just all be aware, it's really a Bluff Water Works situation right now, but it's not going to go into effect till 2027. But I think everybody needs to be aware that it's a federally mandated thing to test for PFAS, which are the plastics that are coming out of everybody's clothes and water bottles and. thing to test for PFAS, which are the plastics that are coming out of everybody's clothes and water bottles and. All the plastics and things that we use everywhere. So they're nanometers, nanograms, probably nano millimeters. Anyway, they're very, very tiny units that they test where there's no testing available anywhere in this region. There's one Colorado lab that sends it to California. It's been something that I've been interested in testing for a while when Gary Giannini was working on some of the geology and where our arsenic was coming from. I was curious if we have any in our water system because that would indicate maybe a source of where it's been. If it's a current source, a flow plastic or an ancient source. So, but anyway, it will be required in 2027. So the labs will be getting up to speed, I'm sure, so that that can be tested. That's, that's really all. There, I meant to send you out the EPA thing and I can't if anybody's interested in seeing it, but they've got a mandate. It's been in the news quite a bit. The same one that Mark sent us all last week. He did send us all a mandate. I thought it was, but. If you have stuff. Yeah, it's been in the news a lot, so it's, it probably is. But just so everybody's aware that it's going to be a new testing requirement. But like, for instance, you can't just take a bottle of water and take it to the lab and get it tested because the plastic jug that it's in can contaminate that water sample. And so it's a special, special sample bottle. It's expensive right now. Park City did one and they've got PFAS in their water because of the ski wax. So our water fortunately comes from deeper, so it's likely we don't have it. But who knows how much it'll filter out? And then they will provide filters or whatever as that moves along too. Testing is tricky. It could be a hard one to comply with, especially for rural places like this because we already have time sensitive problems all the time with our water testing. So, you know, you can only sip a bottle for X amount of hours before they have to throw away samples. If there's a holiday, if there's a Saturday, if the mail truck comes away, there's all kinds of problems, so. And what the reason for it is health because it causes cancer. So it's worth the federal government spending beaucoup bucks to figure it out because we're spending such a budget on healthcare that it's one of the sources. Chances.
Well, thanks. It's. Good to know. Just one more. Scare thing we have to worry about.
Well, it's just, just the state of affairs. I mean, it's, it's clothing and it's plastic water bottles and it's everything that goes into everywhere. And then gets dumped into rivers. So like you say, if you're drinking out of a river, your chances are quite a bit higher that the water treatment system will need some help, but. We'll see. Right now, there's nowhere that I know of that will test the DWQ is, is that they're getting closer, but they don't, it's not available yet.
Well, thank you for that. The next is the summary of Utah legislative changes that affect or could affect us and some kind of action plan. I put this on the agenda because. I'd looked at some of the changes, Aaron had looked at changes. I think the thing that's. Both annoying and disturbing is that there, there were at least four where the change. Well, three, at least three where the, the new legislation one goes into effect May 1st. F 2024. And while some of it doesn't affect it, some of it does. And the one that I see that real, well, there are two. One is House Bill 476 on the municipal land use regulations modifications on the land use clearance application, processing times and other various changes. That's effective November 1st. And then the other one that. Was the affordable building. That applies to modular buildings and it does have a specific reference to towns. So those two do impact us. And I think we probably need to have Chris look at it. The other one was Senate Bill 185. Which I think is interesting. I have a meeting with Matt McDonald tomorrow to talk about a couple of things that. What it says is if the county can't provide a building inspector, meaning whoever is doing your building inspections, if they can't provide a building inspection within three days after they receive the request. And then the builder or applicant has the right to pick their own inspector from a list that's maintained and approved by the inspecting entity that couldn't get it done. And right now, as we're all aware, there's a request. I wouldn't even call it a request. Part of the conversation tomorrow with Matt McDonald is what are we looking at in terms of taking out building permits and building inspections? And what is, what is the commission thinking? How much has the commission been involved? And then. For the most part, getting an inspection for most people is not getting done within three days. And that means they should have a list. And I confirmed today that there is no list, although San Juan County is contracting with Grand County. But if we are being told that they, that San Juan County is shifting this and not doing any of our permitting or inspecting, we need to have a game plan because that went into, that will go into effect May 1st as well. And so part of the conversation with Mac is like. What do you, what do you want to shift to us? When is that shift going to take place? How do you envision helping us make a shift? And then we need to probably talk about, is there some other? If San Juan County's not willing to reach an agreement with us, is there some other entity that could be partnered with that would help us? I, I don't think we have enough building permits that warrant us having an entire building department. So once I get the information from Matt McDonald. I've had some conversations with Kristen Bushnell, but the direction really comes from the commissioners and I want to know how much the commissioners have been brought into this conversation. As we know, the interlocal agreement. The full one, three or four years ago, five years ago, went nowhere because Mac thought he had the commissioners on board and he did not. And I personally, from my personal standpoint, do not care to go before the commission thinking something is going to be a slam dunk pass and have to wait four or five years to try to fix it. So the conversation with Mac, I'll come back and tell you what I found out. If you think of something you want me to ask him related to that, let me know.
What is it? What are the requirements to be a building inspector?
I have no idea. You probably have to take a state test.
Well, that, that's one of my questions because we could have a department if there's somebody in town that wanted to get certified. They could work on demand as an employee. If there's somebody that's, do you know, do you know what it would take? I think you have to have pretty clear and very, very not pretty clear, very clear understanding of the international building code. And that's, that's a big deal. But I wonder if there's somebody, you know, in the county that could be on our staff or, you know, that would just do it. Bruce Bunker used to do it. Craig Adams used to do it. I mean, it's not, it's not impossible there. I, I think that maybe Brad Bunker is doing this for landing these days. I'm not sure.
I don't, I don't think it's Brad. I had the name today. But, you know, Blanding has a full department.
Yeah.
Yeah, Monticello does not. So Monticello is waiting for us. To get our, our alignment with Mac, so that Monticello can get alignment with us and Mac. And so.
I mean, to me, it kind of still makes sense for the county to do it because there's so many unincorporated areas that. That require building permits, so.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm hopeful I will get more information. Kristen Bushnell said that three months ago, she gave Mac a contract for him to bring to us to sign. The reality of it is, is what I told her today when we talked is that there's no way we're pushing this through like within a week or two weeks. First of all, contract drafted has to be, unless their legal team is, is looking at it. We'll need to have Chris look at it. Right now, we've got a lot of projects for our attorney. And we have an associate working on a project from his office, so. We'll just have to wait and see what they're suggesting. So stay tuned. I'll let you know what he says. Then. On the number 15, financials and the discussion and vote on transfer of state grant funds. When took that for you?
We received the state grant funds and they're in our general fund. They are 400 and. Four hundred thousand and $500. And so I checked, I emailed our accountant to see if we should transfer a chunk of them. And he said, figure out what you need, what you might need. Cause you really don't want to keep transferring things back and forth if you can help it. You want to leave enough in that. That makes it a little easier. But he basically, but I explained to him that this grant we easily may not be touching it for a year. Because we can't do too much with it until fire suppression's in. So he basically said, go ahead, figure out how much you want to keep in it and transfer the rest.
Is it in the separate account or just in our general checking account?
It's, it's, it's in its own account ledger, but it's in the general fund. And so what happens is it comes. So it's in Zions basically. And so whatever we transfer leaves Zions and goes into the reinvestment account.
It would seem to me, what I, what I know about the grant, and Aaron's much more knowledgeable about it, there really is no reason that I can think of to hold anything back, just put it all into the PTIF because there's nothing that we're going to be able to use it for, at least for, for six months, probably closer to a year.
Only thing would be the engineering or professional services, which we have budgeted for $80,000 to come out of that grant specifically. But I would, I would doubt that we would be using all 80,000 right off the bat. So if we were to hold back anything in the general checking, maybe 25,000 of it, maybe.
But won't we get notice of a bill that we'd have a week or two to make that transfer? Cause they go real quick.
Oh, you can, I could transfer them. I mean, immediately, although I usually don't transfer it without coming to the, getting on the agenda first.
Yeah, I would be in favor of putting the whole chunk in just to keep it cleaner and.
So if, in looking at the 2025 budget, we would want to, if I'm understanding you, Aaron correctly, we would want to hold back 25 for the 2025 budget or 40,000 or something. So that during that year, we'd have that money already budgeted.
Budget is going to be totally separate. I think if we think that we're going to be paying a professional services firm within like the next two months, maybe hold back the 25, but otherwise it, those accounts make so much of interest just for the sake of. I mean, even over the course of two months, that extra money could, could make a really big difference for us, so. I'd say.
Put it all?
I might put it all.
Could we keep 500,000? Or not 500,000, 500, 500. So that it's a nice round number. So we would transfer 400,000.
I would transfer what came in. That's the cleanest. You brought it in, you put it out and it's right there. And then you bring in what you, you need to pay out when you get bills.
Yeah, if it doesn't affect any line item that we have to be worrying about amending, let's just, let's just put it all in and.
Budget wise, it's fine. And when I get the statements, it shows what the interest was at the start of the month, what it is at the end of the month. So if we have to figure at some point what the interest each of these things that we transfer is, we can just do an average and so that's kind of simple.
Well, I'd make a motion to re-transfer the full amount of 400. Is it 400,500 dollars? Received from the state into the investment account.
One second.
Any further discussion? In all favor say aye.
Aye.
Then I sent, anyone to financials? Are there any questions and can I get a motion to pay them?
I didn't have any questions, so I'll make a motion to waive the bills.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Number 16. A discussion of Southeastern Utah Regional Summit on Monday, May 20th, 2024. Price from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM. This is with the new Serta, which. SUA had rebranded themselves to be the Southeastern Regional Development, I think. Yeah, Development Agency in the Bruce B. Adams Building in Price. And. It's a dinner, general programming, networking, budgets, legal and land use, some workshops. And I was asked by the Utah League to be on a panel, which I said I would do. And now I wish I hadn't said yes. But I'm going to be on a panel. I'd like to know who else would like to go. I will be going and I'd like to have approval to pay for the room. I don't want the travel costs because I'm not going alone, so I don't care about the travel.
I really like the program. There's some really interesting things on it, so I'm definitely interested. I'm open to support.
Where they'd like to go except for some price. So I'm just going to put that into meetings. If they hold something closer to us, then.
I thought the same.
Since we discussed, since we discussed that with them specifically.
I thought the same thing.
It's interesting. You have the discussion every time. It goes nowhere. So what I will do is Linda, if you. Do you think you definitely will go or do you want to think about it?
Um, I'm really interested. I have nothing happening on that date.
So if we get a motion that approves the two of us going to the summit on the, on the 20th.
Motion to approve travel expenses for. And Linda for. The Southeastern Utah Regional Summit on Monday, May 20th.
Did you mean travel expenses or she asked for hotel expenses?
Hotel expenses. Oh, that's separate here.
It depends on, Linda's driving separately, but.
Okay.
I'll be taking Bill along with me, so Linda can decide if she wants to ride with us or drive separately. So let's leave it at travel and hotel and then.
Also a motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. I had really wanted our manager to go with us. She's a busy woman.
Mondays in May, a little rough.
There'll be more. I will, I will again say to Serta, you know, league, we need a little consideration over here in this corner.
At least host it typically.
And it's hard because I mean, they represent four very large counties. There are definitely more middle of this section places they could be meeting. So I do understand the headquarter out of there, but it is. So I do understand they're headquartered out of there, but it is not convenient.
Well, and just that they should be offering a virtual, it's a free attendance thing.
Yeah.
That seems odd.
I'll send a note to them and ask them why they haven't.
Cause if they could even add it between now and May 20th, if they added a virtual, then, you know, if you wanted to go in person, right? If not, just log on.
And maybe tell them, like, you don't even have to do the work sessions, but like the main event, if they could stream that, that would be really helpful.
So you can watch a seat?
Yeah, well.
Is that the main event?
Watch me well. The main event.
Does anybody have an other?
Uh, Community Garden is planting tomorrow, no, it's today. Community Garden is planting Thursday at 10 o'clock if anyone wants to join.
Anybody else? It's 5:32 PM.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye, aye. Anyone opposed? We're adjourned, I'm turning off the recorder, thank you.